Good evening. I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for September 23, 2025. This meeting can be viewed live on the Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at www.youtube.com/atNorthAdams. Just click on the "Live" and then on the 2025.09.23 City Council Meeting, and as always, this meeting will be recorded. Will the Clerk please take the role?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Green is not here. Fitch?
Here.
Alaskowitz?
Here.
Sep-- Shade?
Present.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. Okay, please rise for a moment of silence. Tonight, we remember Norma Williams, who she was employed by the North Adams Public Schools. We also remember Mary Ann Carter, employed by the city of North Adams in the Cemetery Department, and Donna Moranty, teacher at the North Adams Public Schools, also the mother of retired fire chief Steve Moranty, and building inspector Bill Moranty, and also the grandmother of Mitchell Moranty.
And Matthew.
And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes, September 9, 2025, City Council Minutes.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing of visitors, this is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. As a reminder, I will tap the gavel when you've reached your two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended. And as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties, please refrain from any personal attacks. Please raise your hand and approach the mic, and I will call you up-- or please raise your hand, and then I'll call you to approach the mic. Mr. Valiers, I believe I saw your hand first.
Hi, everyone. Josh Valiers, Eighteen and a Half Hall Street. I just want to speak very briefly on the Affordable Housing Trust ordinance. I think this is a fantastic opportunity for North Adams. I've been following it for about half a year or so, a little more than, and, you know, just throughout its legislative history. You know, I've gone to a couple of the general government meetings, and it seems like there's broad support for it. I just want to say, you know, over 120 communities have adopted trusts of a similar stature, and it's created opportunities for housing, renovation of existing housing, assistance for down payments, rents, mortgages, and I can't think of a more opportune time for this to come to fruition. So I'm excited to hear what general government's coming back with tonight, and for the opportunity to hopefully see this thing pass. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chamberlain.
Yes? Cody Chamberlain, Seventy-three Furnace Street. And in May, this body passed a resolution that condemned all policies that undermine the structure and function of our democracy and the rule of law, both here and across the globe. So I was shocked two weeks ago when so many of you made clear your intention to disregard your own approved rules for filling a vacancy on council. Last week, the solicitor weighed in to affirm that your rules of procedure are enforceable as law, and that council may only disregard the directive of our charter when, quote, "Failure to comply causes no harm to the rights of private individuals." This is clearly not such a case, with interested candidates having already submitted letters of interest as prescribed. A decision to disregard your rules would deny them their right to have their case heard by you. Obviously, you may choose to nominate and vote for any person you like after hearing all interested candidates, but I would bravely raise concern over one criterion discussed last meeting. Prior to COVID, I lived in Boston, and in 2017, all four of the city's incumbent city councillors at large ran for reelection without much competition. The fifth-place candidate in that race earned votes from fewer than 3% of Bostonians, but was installed the following year when one of those incumbents resigned to take a seat in Congress. 3% does not reflect the will of voters, and in North Adams, where elections are consistently less competitive, the prospect of such simple rule consistently identifying the best candidates is even more dubious. Choosing between fellow members of our community can be uncomfortable, especially with a public ballot, but is the responsibility placed on our deliberative bodies for good reason. To continue acting according to council's unlawful precedent is to hasten the day when you'll have to choose whether to install a candidate truly unsuited to the position they seek because they were able to secure ballot access, or to make a hard choice that will seem more personal, antagonistic, and petty because of the precedent that you have reinforced. Now, the solicitor did say that a violation of your laws and rules would likely have no significant repercussions, and I understand that the issue may seem trivial compared to the actions of others who would disregard the law, those petty tyrants eager to enrich themselves, silence critics, and punish enemies. But to disregard your own rule of law is to undermine the very basis by which we oppose these tyrants without force. Every meeting, you pledge allegiance to the republic for which that flag stands. And what does that mean if you would undermine the rule of law that is the basis for its existence and without which it cannot exist? I look forward to knowing when interested candidates will be heard, as is their right. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Barbara? Please step up to the mic.
Yes, good evening. I'm here tonight to talk about a correspondence that was submitted to President Sapienza on September the 12th, and it's regarding boards and commissions, which I know are on the agenda tonight in a couple of different areas. There's been a lot of discussion over the past year regarding the placement of boards and commissions, whether or not it needed the authority of this body in order to make those placements happen, and it was not a joint concession as to whether that could or couldn't happen. But I'd like to share with you tonight the opinion that was submitted to the MSBA in regard to an issue there, addressing that exact issue, and the solicitor's opinion five times, written on August the 13th, suggests that in this opinion of our solicitor, not only can this mayor appoint anyone that she chooses to the board, they're not even required to reside in the city of North Adams. Five times he shares this statement, not only are they not required to reside here, they're not required to even live in this state, as is happening currently on our school building committee board. Five times he states that there is no requirement whatsoever, even though this is not the requirement stated by this council previously or on our city's website. And I ask you tonight to vote carefully when people are just presented to you, and I'm not sure how, or I would hope there could be some opinion as we go through this evening, exactly where you stand on our administration being able to appoint people to boards under the solicitor's opinion that there is no right that they live in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Ms. Reel, please step up to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Virginia Reel, and I am here speaking on behalf of the North Adams Community Housing Organization, otherwise known as NACHO. We support creating an affordable housing trust. We think there's great value in creating the trust as a body dedicated to thinking about and moving forward ways to create housing that is affordable to people with low or moderate income. Even if there is very modest funding in the initial budget for the trust, that will be a great jumping-off point for the trust to build up membership and gain consensus on housing problems, solutions, and fund some small, impractical projects such as low-interest revolving loan fund for a senior to get a new roof, mortgage assistance for a young family. There are 147 municipalities in Massachusetts that have affordable housing trusts. By creating one, North Adams would be in good company. Longer term, creating an affordable housing trust is a step towards North Adams becoming a housing-choice municipality, a designation that opens the door to specific state funding programs. We thank the council member Fitch for bringing this forward, and the General Government Committee for their review and favorable recommendation on this ordinance. We urge North Adams City Council to vote in favor of the Affordable Housing Trust, and look forward to working with the mayor and Office of Community Development on the implementation of the trust.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? Okay, not seeing any hands. We're going to move forward. Council Paper Number 12,481, An Ordinance to Amend the Revised Ordinances of the City of North Adams: Creating a New Affordable Housing Trust Under Chapter 2, Article 37, Postpone From the Meeting of September 9, 2025. And do we have an update from Counselor Bona?
Yes. The general government has met three times on this. The last meeting, we did end with a recommendation to bring this to the council for approval. There were some revisions and changes, which I'll let Counselor Fitch touch on that, since most of the ordinance and everything brought forward, you know, we give credit-- I give credit to Counselor Fitch. One of the concerns and debates were, while there were some that were very favorable, I think everyone was in favor of it, but I think where there was some debating was the timeline. Do we approve this now and put it on the administration to have to get, you know, get it together with the community development and members, you know, of staff? There was, you know, and I felt hearing that from that, you know, the administration supports it, but there's a concern on the timeline. So I do know one of the things that we mentioned at the last meeting was, so that as we approve this, it's not starting immediately. We're giving a short time so that some-- give the administration some time to, you know, pull together members. Counselor Shade, I know she brought up, and again, if you want to touch on this, but was concerned about if the trust goes into debt, does that fall on the city, what are some of the responsibilities? And the trust is an independent entity, so it would not come back on the city. You know, that was a response we did get back from the solicitor, sort of like the redevelopment authority. It's its own entity. It doesn't come through us, and-- but, you know, it doesn't mean there's not some connection there, but it really is to have its own entity. And-- sorry, losing the word I want there. But I'm going to pass it first, if I can, through the chair, to have Counselor Fitch sort of give his piece on it, and then also Counselor Shade, that did bring up some concerns and how we resolved those. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Fitch.
Yeah, sure. No, I know a lot of us in this room right now have heard a lot about this already, so sorry for repeating myself, but a very quick overview of what the Affordable Housing Trust is. I'm going to just read an excerpt from the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission's description. "A municipal affordable housing trust can help create and preserve affordable housing by directing funds to locally-approved projects or programs. Projects such as construction of new housing units can be funded by the Affordable Housing Trust. An affordable housing trust can also direct funds to programs such as rental assistance, first-time homebuyer programs, and housing rehabilitation. With an affordable housing trust, a municipality dedicates funds for affordable housing outside of the general municipal budget. A major benefit of an affordable housing trust is the ability to move quickly and efficiently when housing opportunities arise." And now, this trust would be a group of people who would be appointed by the mayor and some by council, because a council member would be present as well, with the way that we have written it. This group of people would start brainstorming, researching, applying for grants on their own, finding funding streams, and working with the city of North Adams to find funding streams through the city of North Adams as well. This would be a collaboration between our Community Development Office and the mayor, and whoever is on this trust. Even if it were just a group of people doing that, I think that is a win for our city. One thing that I'm excited about here is that this will provide opportunities to stabilize housing in our community and provide opportunities for us, you know, not just people who have the least means, but the general populace to stay in their homes, to afford to live here, so that in the long run, we can have a statable community. I will mention a couple changes that Counselor Bona had alluded to. This thing has been through a bunch of different reviews from a bunch of different people, and a lot of people have given guidance, and I'll go through a little bit of a thank-you list towards the end of this, but a couple things that came up in general government were the makeup of the trust. You know, we had taken it from a few different ways of populating this to the mayor, member of the North Adams City Council, member-- oh, I'm so sorry, that is the original-- shoot. Actually, now I'm not finding it. Thank you so very much. The mayor, a member of the North Adams City Council, appointed by the council president, five at-large members, and we just put it in here, "with a preference for persons with experience relevant to the trust, including but not limited to North Adams Planning Board, North Adams Housing Authority, real estate, housing, banking, fundraising, and/or lived experience. At-large member shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to city council approval." We also changed a couple of other sections and clarified a couple of concerns. You know, we had the solicitor, city solicitor Bard, give us his opinion on whether or not this trust was separate from the city, and like Counselor Bona said, it is. I also have a long list of other people that we chatted with, and just wanted to thank the North Adams Community Housing Organization, aka NACHO, Virginia Reel and Lillian Zawinski, Maria Kozak, the head of Community Development, Mayor Maxi herself, the General Government Committee, Keith Bona, Ashley Shade, Wayne Wilkinson, city solicitor Bard, folks in Williamstown, Pittsfield, and the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission chimed in about this and gave us some guidance, and the North Adams Housing Authority also gave us some guidance. And the nature of this guidance was constructive and encouraging. So that's all that I really have to say about the trust, because I know you've all heard so much about it, but I'm really excited for this to move forward. I will, however, propose an amendment, if it's appropriate time to do so.
Not this time, and we can begin to start with a motion. Counselor Shade, did you have some things to add to that?
Yeah. Over the course of going through this process, we've learned a lot about what an affordable housing trust is, and one of the things that I mentioned very early on in the process was limiting city liability. An organization that gets to vote and not have to come to us for permission to spend money, we want to make sure that the city's not on the hook for that if they go-- if they spend more than they're supposed to. And we have come back with the city solicitor saying the city would not be on the hook for that, that the trust itself would be responsible, which I think is very important to clarify and make sure it's known. The city itself would not be on the hook for any finances of this commission. So this is a great opportunity for us to put in a trust that'll get access to new funding, new grants, new revenue sources, to help people with housing without the city being liable. And I think that is a very important distinction, and one that I think that this is going to be a great thing to implement and put in place.
Counselor Bona, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, so a couple of things, and again, if Counselor Fitch you want to touch on this. During the meetings, also, there was a concern brought up of, is this conflicting with other programs that are out there? I believe the RAD program was brought up, and I do believe, Counselor Fitch, you talked with the housing director about the RAD program, and how that does or doesn't conflict, and actually how they may work together. The other thing, back to-- and again, the mayor wants to speak on this after, but that I was getting a sense of was, again, everyone seemed to be supportive of this, but there was maybe a difference of opinions of, again, the ones that were behind it and supporting it now, want it to happen now, let's get the trust together, and let's let them decide how they want the trust to move forward, while the other side or other opinions might have been, let's figure out what the trust should be, and then get the members versus allowing the members to decide that. So I think that's where there were some differences. Again, overall, at the end, I think we-- again, we did recommend this, but again, I don't know, Counselor Fitch, if you want to talk about conflicts and RAD, and, you know, why this is unique of itself.
Yeah, sure. I did have a conversation with the North Adams Housing Authority consultants that work with them about the RAD program, and the RAD program is, you know, in development, to my understanding. I wish I had my notes up right now from the conversation, but the nature of it is, what they said is, affordable housing trusts often work with RAD programs, and they work together. You know, they may even be kind of coalescing funding streams over time, those two together. So they didn't articulate any concerns about it. As long as they can work together cohesively in the future, that's just-- that was their hope, you know, having the Affordable Housing Trust and RAD in our community.
And I do feel, through the chair, please, you can mention, I know it's an amendment that we're going to be looking to add, but if you could talk about when we're actually looking to have this start?
Yes, certainly. So to compromise and to, like, accommodate all the opinions on this, you know, including Maria Kozak, the head of Community Development, who really just started as head of Community Development fairly recently. Maria has told me that she has applied for a grant through the Berkshire Regional Planning Commission for them to provide technical assistance in setting up an affordable housing trust. So I think that, I assume that that was comforting for her and for everybody involved as well, that we'd have some real know-how coming in to help us form this thing, to provide some more time for that, and also to gain a little more community input and start to get people excited about joining this, perhaps. We had talked about perhaps starting this effective of next year, and that is including, you know, the proposal that I will make in a moment.
Okay. Any further from-- any further updates from the committee?
No, not from the committee.
Okay, not from the committee. Okay. Moving on. Do we have a motion?
Move to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law.
Second. Motion in a second. Okay.
Now for the amendment.
Now for the amendment.
Okay. The amendment that I will propose is that in section-- can you hear someone more to? Thank you so much. Section 11, duration of trust. The first sentence starts, "The trust shall be of indefinite duration, comma," and my proposal is to add in, "Duration, comma, effective January 1, 2026," and then continue with, "until terminated by a vote by the city council."
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Any discussion on the amendment? Counselor Shade?
Can you repeat this section, please?
Yes. Section 11, it's the last paragraph in the ordinance, duration of trust.
Got it.
"The trust shall be of indefinite duration, comma," and we would add, "effective January 1, 2026," and then continue with, "until terminated by a vote of the city council."
Would it make more sense to put it in section 2-191? "City of North Adams Affordable Housing Trust Fund is hereby established as of January 1, 2026."
Doesn't matter to me either, right?
Just-- easier to find?
I mean, after January, it's going to be null anyway, so.
Yeah. May I change all of my amendments?
Yes, you may change. Rescind your original motion and--
I do.
--the amended--
I rescind my original motion. My new motion would be that in section 219-- oh, thank you. 2191, Establishment, "The City of North Adams Affordable Housing Trust is hereby established and add effective January 1, 2026."
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now, do we have a motion on the--
We do.
--item as amended?
We already made the motion.
We already have that motion? Counselor Blackmer?
I think that this is a good idea. This is important. I think giving a little bit of lead time to figure out what everybody wants to do isn't a bad idea. One of my questions is, is that the DLT-A grant?
One of them. There's two opportunities.
Oh, there's two opportunities, okay. And that's for more mashing out and operationalizing, not actual fundraising.
If I may through the president, when you're ready, break.
Yeah, let me get Counselor Shade's question.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate how important that establishing an affordable housing trust is right now in our current housing climate. As many people know, housing is becoming more and more unaffordable. Rents are going up, mortgages prices are going up, taxes are going up, everything's going up, and the dollar is worth less. So any type of way that we can create opportunity for people to access new funding, new opportunities to get housing, is going to be a win for our city and for everybody in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, mayor.
Thank you, President Sapienza. I just wanted to point out that we, as an administration, at first, we were a little hesitant, I would say, because this is a big undertaking. But this is a true example, when we hear the voice of the community and the administration and the legislative body and the community come together to move initiatives forward to help us be stronger. The technical assistance piece, I think, is going to be a great asset to us, and I applaud Maria's efforts for being so aggressive. We talk as a team, and we understand the importance of legislation like this, and we think by passing this will be just the launching pad of the reality of the good work that we can all do together. So I thank everyone for being part of that. It is a big undertaking, but I feel confident if we keep the momentum going, it will be successful. It's going to take us a little bit to get it off the ground, and that's why we've been so aggressive with looking for some technical assistance, because it is big. It is new, but it's very important. And I just want to be clear that this is a true example of the community, the city council, and the administration coming together and what good work we can do. So thank you for that.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to-- and Counselor Blackmer, did you pass to a second reading?
And publish as required by law. Then it was amended, so the vote would be to vote as amended.
Right, yep. So we have a motion on the floor to pass to a second reading and publish as required by law, or post as a municipal bulletin, as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Was worried.
Council Paper Number 12,519, In Order to Accept Mass General Law, Chapter 200A, Section 9A, which governs the disposition of unclaimed property by a city or town, establishing an alternative procedure for disposing of abandoned funds held in custody of the city, referred to the general government, with a return date of September 23, 2025. Counselor Bona, do you have an update for us?
Yeah, I'm going to request that we postpone this for one more meeting, as we have not met on this, and I do know we got to get in, so.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone this to the first meeting in October. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Council Paper Number 12,522, A Communication from President Sapienza Regarding the Vacant City Council Seat Due to the Resignation of Counselor Deanna Morrow. We will need a motion on this communication to move forward.
I move to set a date to fill this vacancy, the first meeting of November.
Okay, we have a motion to fill this position by the first meeting of November. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Shade?
Yes. The process of filling this, you know, we've discussed a little bit last week. I think the appetite of the council was to appoint whoever gets the votes from the general election, so the timeframe will work out. But I still think we should also open up the process to hear anybody who's interested, allow them the opportunity to speak, as has been done in the past. It doesn't mean you have to vote for them, but I think providing that opportunity to members of the public is what we agreed upon in our rules and what we should do. Allowing that opportunity to be heard is so important, especially right now, and it doesn't mean we have to vote that way. At the end, we can vote whatever way we-- whatever, you know, way the motion happens. But I do think it's important that we follow our own rules and our own processes. We open that up. We take resumes if people are interested. If nobody applies, nobody applies. But at least give candidates and people an opportunity to speak if they are interested, and then we can take the vote in November. It is what we have done in the past. I know that some people have just been appointed as the 10th vote. Other people, I know Counselor Alaskowitz, when Counselor Alaskowitz went through the process, there was the open process. He was selected because he was the next highest vote-getter, but the process was still open, and the applications were still allowed to be submitted. So I think having that opportunity to do that is important, and that's what I'd like to see happen.
Okay. Counselor Wilkinson?
Many people may disagree with me, but I'm 100% against this. It may be in council rules, but council rules are kind of-- aren't the law. We live in the United States of America. We elect our leaders. That is our right. Taking applications from the outside, I had to go through the applications from the outside. outside when I was the 10th candidate, but eventually got, got a position on council. We need to have only elected people that actually received votes for the citizens of North Adams to be placed on city council. It's the American way. We can take applications. Let's see, we're going into October, the election is a month away, so we're gonna form a committee to look at all the people that applied, and we're gonna do all this, and we're still not gonna get it done before there is an actual election. If you wanna choose somebody that actually has votes and was actually elected, I might consider that. I'm all for leaving the position open right now, because the rest is just a waste of time.
Thank you. Counsel Blackmer?
Okay, so for clarification, there have been two types of ways we have done this. When it has been in the middle of the term, whether it's three months in, a year and a half, we open it up, people apply. It usually goes to the 10th vote getter. It hasn't always, but it can. This instance is where the opening happens with a month, a month and a half before the next election. So we then usually have in the past, when it's happened after September 1st or August 15th, whatever it was, we chose to wait to fill the position with the highest vote-getting, one or two people, there's been a case where it was two people, of those on the ballot who were the incumbents. So instead of taking office on January 1st and being sworn in with everyone else, they will take office at the first meeting in November, as Counsel Shade has proposed, which is after the election. So the question I have, is the person who comes in as the highest-ranking non-incumbent, are they going to have to submit an application to in their resume? Um, I, I guess that's, so if you could clarify that. But I think what, what's happening is we're kind of confusing two different things, and council rules are not the same, and I never saw a ruling from the attorney. Council rules are not ordinances. Ordinances and state law are our laws, our charters are law. Our council rules are guiding how we conduct business, whether people agree with that or not. But that's the clarification. We're talking the difference between somebody, so we're short for two meetings or three meetings, as opposed to being, going through a whole process, appointing someone, so we can't even open it up until next meeting. And so they would take office maybe then, so that'd be the beginning in October, and then we'd have one, two, three, four, five more meetings, possibly six, and then they might not even be in office anymore. And to me, the learning curve, the things you have to know, it doesn't make sense. But Counsel Shade, if you could answer my questions to what I was originally asked. Thank you.
Counselor Shade, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the way to do this is set a deadline for, I don't know, the Friday before that meeting. That way, the election will have happened, and if that person is interested in taking office, they can say, "Yes, I'm interested in filling the position," because they'll know by then. Um, that gives it the time, it also gives it the time for people from the community to have at least the opportunity to present themselves. And I am somebody who benefited from being able to present myself to the public as an interested party, and even though I wasn't selected, I still had the opportunity. And I think that's what people in the community want, is the opportunity to present themselves, even if they're not selected. Our council rules open up to give that opportunity, and that's what I think we should do, is give the opportunity for voices to be heard. Doesn't mean we have to vote that way. At the end of the day, we might just vote for the person, the, the non-highest incumbent to select it, and if they're interested and they wanna fill it, I say, "Okay, let them fill it." But we should decide that at the time, once we know who is actually put forward, who actually has come forward and had their opportunity to at least present themselves. And that's all I'm asking for, is to give everyone an opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bona?
Yeah. So I guess I got a piece of a little of everyone here. I agree with Counsel Blackmer, we have done it probably equally, both ways. Um, so precedence has sort of been set, you know, both ways. I agree with the voice in the audience that the 10th vote doesn't always by, mean that that's a vote people want. Sometimes if there's only 10 people running and the 10th vote is someone who got three votes, that is not, in my mind, someone who got elected. That is someone who sort of was told, "We don't want you." So just because they're on the ballot does not mean, uh, they, they were something, uh, someone that the people wanted. I will say, if we wanna accept resumes or, you know, have people apply, that's okay, but I will tell you right now, I will vote for the person, a newcomer, you know, the vote, someone who got elected, who's the highest vote getter of the new candidates. And I'm gonna say that right now. So you wanna apply, you can apply, but that's who I'm gonna go for, because especially since we're picking this after the election, you know, it's so close to the election, and it does seem like, you know, and I'm also concerned about, does this then turn into campaigning for those who are running? Because now this gives an opportunity for some of them that wanna get up and sort of speak and then, um, you know, and, and at least we're not making our decision till after the election, but if we were making our decision a month before the election and we appointed someone who was running, that gives them a big advantage. I think what we do need to do, go back to, and I'll probably be bringing this to general government, is we do need to clarify our rules better with timelines that explain when things happen at certain times. Again, there's nothing that is in there that says we have to take the 10th person. It does say we get the pick, and it does say it doesn't have to do with how well they, you know, um, submitted applications or not. I just feel, being this close to the election, it makes complete sense to go with what the people have decided, and we're saying on the top vote getter, not the bottom vote getter, we're saying the top vote getter. So clearly, that is someone that the people probably do want. So that's where I will stand on this.
Thank you. And in my opinion, I agree with Counselor Bona that we should wait to, till we know who the top non-incumbent vote getter is, as they did put in the work campaigning and working to get that seat, and I think that, uh, they would, uh, it would be prudent to bring them in early, swear them in at that meeting, and go from there. And that would reflect, and that would be the most reflective, of the people's choice in the city. Thank you. Counsel Wilkinson?
Just out of curiosity, you've kinda changed your position, because when I got all the notes from, you, you suggested that we leave it open. I was wondering what caused you to change your position?
The reason I said that is just to start discussion.
So, when you start discussion, you're not really telling us what you really feel?
It was just a suggestion.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Thank you.
Counsel Blackmer?
So can I amend Counsel Shade's motion, um, to say that, um, we need the applications or letters of interest, I guess you would call them, by the 7th of November, which is the Friday before. Keep in mind that the meeting would normally fall on November 11th, that's the second Tuesday, but that is Veterans Day, so we will be meeting on the 12th. So it'll give us, as long as they get them to the city clerk by noon on the 7th, make it noon, so that she can get it, get them to us by the end of business on the 7th, so we have the weekend to look at them.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Counselor Alaskwitz?
I just, I want a little more piece of discussion, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just, for clarity, I as well have changed my position on this as well, that I believe there are three of us in this room who did benefit at one time from being the 10th vote getter, even though we all did put in our resumes. But I want to say, I could be wrong, in the last election, we went through the same thing when, uh, Michael Obasahan had gained a seat. So the three of us in the room, when it happened to us, it was very early in the term. So now here we are at the very end of the term, so it does make more sense to take the highest non-incumbent vote getter to fill the seat. Just my opinion.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify, we did it the last time when Councilors, um, Harpen and Councilor Forrest resigned in August, second half of August, and then before that, when Clark Billings just re, resigned, I think it was August or Sep, September of an election year, that was the other time it was done. I think that would've been 2009, maybe?
Okay, it was before my time, but in recent memory, I remember that we, uh, it was, uh, Michael Obasahan and I believe Marie Harpen.
Marie Harpen, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Any further discussion on the amendment? Counsel Wilkinson?
Do you clarify what we're voting on?
We're voting on asking for letters of interest to be submitted to the city clerk by noon on November 7th, so that she can get out them to us by the end of business on Nov, the motion is noon on the 7th. We will then get the letters by the end of business on the 7th. We will then have until the 11th to review them, including non-incumbents who got elected, they can put theirs in, and anyone else, and on the 11th, we, I'm sorry, on the 12th, we would actually put it on the agenda and vote.
This is October?
November, after the election.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. On the amendment, all those in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call?
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaskwitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Six yeas.
Six yeas. Okay, on the original motion, as amended, all those in favor?
Roll call.
We have a request for a roll call.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaskwitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
I'm an American, no.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Six yeas.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, council paper number 12,00524, communication number 128 from Mayor Maxi, requesting time for Veronica Clark, Director, to give a brief presentation on the North Adams Public Library. Mayor Maxi, would you present your speaker?
Sure. As everyone will remember, sometimes when we're in Finance Committee, we get bogged down with, um, activities or what's going on in certain departments, and I want to try to bring in some of the departments maybe once a month and rotate them in and out, so the council and the community are aware of the great work that is going on. So Veronica Clark from the North Adams Public Library is here tonight to briefly, I say briefly, um, talk about all of the good things that are, um, happening at the North Adams Public Library. Veronica?
Thank you, ma'am. I don't normally have to stand in front of the mic, so I just wanna make sure everybody can hear me. Okay, um, good evening, I'm Veronica Clark, I'm the library director for the North Adams Public Library, our beautiful building down the road. I don't know where I am in orientation, but that's what it looks like if you haven't seen it. Um, our mission is pretty simple, to empower individuals and families with equitable access to resources. Our vision is to enhance community well-being, safety, and inclusivity, and our services are available to anybody who walks through our doors, calls, or emails. Whether you're in California or in Michigan, where there is another North Adams Public Library, we have come to find out, there's a couple of them around the country. So we do sometimes periodically get calls from people, which is interesting when they say, "The door's locked," and I'm staring at it and it's wide open. All right. So if you're not familiar, our library hours are Monday through Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. On Wednesdays, our hours are extended till 8:00 p.m., for those of you who can't make it, um, by the 5:00 p.m. cutoff. Um, if you can't make it Monday through Friday, we're also open on Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So there's lots of opportunities, being open six days a week, for y'all to come and visit. We do have an extensive collection of items, as you can see above. Just a couple examples are bestsellers, classics, magazines, DVDs, audiobooks, large print books. Um, we also have kits for various things for the children, uh, we have kits for adults who want to go and explore the Berkshires. They come with binoculars. Um, we have all sorts of resources available, and if we can't find it, we're doing a bad job. I don't know. Um, we also provide museum passes, most notably in the local area of the Mass MoCA Clark and, um, Norman Walker Museum. We also provide a variety of others, those are funded by our friends. Um, and if you've taken a trip down to Springfield, we have the Basketball Hall of Fame as a new pass this year, so it's very fun. We also provide technology resources, uh, printing, you can print from home, come in, and we'll release it, and the job will be there for you. Um, we have free Wi-Fi inside the building and outside of the building, up to the sidewalk, um, faxing, photocopies, if you wanna scan something. Um, we have hundreds of local newspapers from our reference collection dating back as far as 1844, which is kinda crazy, um, as well as archive materials, but we do require a reserve, or an interview or an appointment to see those resources, 'cause we gotta find them, and they're careful handling. Um, everyday resources, we have mass hire in once a week on Tuesdays from 10:00 to 3:00. We also do resume workshops, we have mass hire for veterans, which is strictly for our veterans from 1:00 to 3:00. Berkshire Community College comes in with information sources, we have added a new tech assistance, um, oh, shoot, um, once, tw, once or twice a week, but that is also by appointment only, but please give us a call, and we are more than happy to add you to our volunteer schedule, 'cause we like to keep them busy. Um, we have meeting rooms, we also provide a variety of classes in those meeting rooms, not limited to book clubs, D and D, um, we have three different yoga courses available, our chair yoga is currently full, but we also have yoga on Tuesday mornings and Thursday afternoons. Um, we have our story times and a variety of programs after hours for special interests, which I will come up to those here in a minute. Oh, I'm doing all that. Um, we also have community outreach, 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 um, you can often find us at the farmers markets, at the fairs, the festivals, just come by and say hi. Um, we have plenty of volunteer opportunities, so if there's anybody looking to get civically engaged, please come and visit us, we can always find something to do for you. Um, so right now, we have work in progress. If anybody's had a chance to go down the hill, you've seen the big boom truck and the fencing, they have started the exterior reconstruction project, restoration project on the Belvedere last week. Um, so just bear with us, because it could take a little bit of time, but if you see somebody high in the air, they're working hard to make us pretty again. Um, this is just an example of a calendar for October events for our adults, which I will go over a little bit more. Some of the upcoming programs include Plastic People, The Hidden Crisis of Microplastics, um, The History of Knitting in America. If you don't know, we have a knitting club every Tuesday, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the parlor. They're an amazing group, and they're always looking for more people to join their project circles. Um, again, the Free Community College Information Sessions, we do one a month for the rest of the year, except for October, because she's on vacation. Um, and then we have an additional one in the evening in December, for those who can't make it during the day. Um, we have Handmade Life and a handmade, handmade, or Life Handmade, I'm getting my words all tangled up, and then Fun Magic Mushrooms. We've actually had a lot of interest in mushrooms, and so our adult services library went out and found somebody who knows more than we do to educate anybody who wants to know. So please come and join, those are our November activities. We also have a local history open archive, um, he's there from 10:00 to 12:00. He's there from 10:00 to 12:00. Gene Carlson is amazing. If you've never had the opportunity to come pick his brain about North Adams and the history of it, you should definitely do so, because he can talk me under a table about everything that's up there. We also are doing a special acoustic tunnel at 150 years. So that's going to be fun. And Hollywood's coming up, so two weeks, keep it on the map. Wicked Strange, New England. We've had this gentleman, Jeff, once before, Jeff Lander, if y'all are not familiar. He's done Discovery Channel, wrote a ton of books, Haunted New England. You'll love him, he's a great presenter. Please come and see the show if you are able to, tell your friends. For our children's department, we have just revamped our story times to fall more in line with North Adams Public School's pre-K requirements, so that our little ones are being provided an opportunity, even if they don't attend preschool or they are at home. Ms. Holly provides a variety of activities for age groups. Our Tuesday group is birth to 18 months. It's designed to do early movements, emotions, identifications, things like that. The kids are brilliant. Junior story time is for our older groups, also includes a craft and more boisterous activities than most birth to 18-monther up for. This is just some statistics, in case anybody's curious. Last fiscal, fiscal year, from July 1st to June 30th, we had over 50,000 visitors to the library. So I would like all of you to come and visit us, too. So that is us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I forgot to mention, I did bring bookmark, oh, they're magnets for your fridge. It has our hours, our catalogs, stuff like that. If I didn't bring enough, please come to the library, we have more.
Okay, Counsel Shade, well, we have some questions.
To the Chair, first, thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, welcome.
It's always great to hear about what's going on at the library. Just a quick question, do you still use the CW Mars program to connect interdisciplinary...
We are members of CW Mars, absolutely. That's why I said if we can't, if we don't have it in our library, we have 156 other libraries that we can get it from. In addition, if they're not within the CW Mars organization, we can go outside the entire country for interlibrary loans. Now, that might cost you postage, but otherwise, we can still get it here if you would like.
Amazing, thank you.
Thank you. Council paper number 12,00525, communication 129 from Mayor Maxi, requesting time for Chief Bailey to give a brief presentation regarding a proposed prohibition of single-use NIP bottle sales within the city. And Mayor Maxi, I'd like you to present your speaker.
Thank you, President Sapienza. So let me start by saying, this is again another effort for us to be responsive to the community and work with the legislative body on improving the health and safety of our city. This presentation is in no way trying to hinder or hurt any of our local liquor stores, but we have a serious problem with NIP bottles throughout our city. This weekend, on my walk with my dog, I picked up 257 NIP bottles from Hospital Ave, Down Eagle Street, across river, up Eagle Street. And I probably could have picked up more if I really paid attention. I also believe that it is for us to start putting procedures or policies in place for us to be safer and wiser with our environment. President, I just promoted you. Chief Bailey created a packet, which is on your table, just so you could see some of the pictures and things that we've been experiencing, as well as some samples of communities who have already created an ordinance similar to what we would like to see. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Bailey to talk about what we're seeing on the streets and how it's impacting the work of the police department and our environment. Chief Bailey?
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So, um, my proposal is a single-use plastic NIP bottle ban. So what is, what is a NIP bottle, if you don't know? It's a 50-milliliter, 1.7-ounce bottle containing an individual serving of liquor and spirits. They usually cost between $1 and $5 from the liquor store. A can of beer costs between $1 or $4 at the liquor store. Alcohol in a NIP bottle is, is a higher content of alcohol in a NIP bottle than it is in a can of beer. That's why people will choose the NIP bottle over a can of beer more often. I couldn't say it any better than this woman could say it. But according to the, an article published by the Suffolk Journal written by Michaela Linder, she says, "Seen as a discreet way to drink in public spaces, NIPS are often considered a gateway to public intoxication. Due to their easily disposable nature combined with the small and concealable size, NIPS are the ideal medium to inconspicuously, to inconspicuously consume alcohol in public. Additionally, the convenience and relatively cheap price of NIPS make it readily available to the homeless population, which has a very high rates of substance use and alcoholism. Yet for some people, NIPS provide a portion control amount of alcohol, which helps them drink in moderation." So I can see the benefits of having NIP bottles for those that consume responsibly. However, the, the problem that we have in North Adams is people are consuming them irresponsibly and then just discarding them on the ground. So far in North Adams, so far this year in North Adams, we have 83 people that have been arrested for protective custody. That's for the consumption of alcoholic beverages in public. That's right now, September in 2025. Last year, we had 43. So 43 people, and now this year, we have 83 people already. So we have a problem. There's been increased consumption of alcohol in known locations surrounding our local liquor stores. We know this because we find the NIP bottles in primarily locations surrounding our local liquor stores. The litter has been an extremely noticeable problem in North Adams, where NIP bottles are discarded on the ground in areas surrounding these liquor stores, as well as the sidewalks leading to and from them. There's been a noticeable, a noticeable increase in our homeless encampments in North Adams as well, which is very sad to say. I know personally, we've, we've been dealing with people trying to give them housing, and we're having a shortage. And we visit these homeless encampments to try and talk with people, to see how we can help them, what problems they're having, and how we can point them in the right direction to our social services, which have been great in our city. But when visiting these encampments, the number one litter that we see on the ground are these NIP bottles. It's not only, the, the blight that these encampments and litter have created in the city is not only noticeable to the officers patrolling the areas, but also citizens, businesses who call us up, tourists who walk the sidewalks, who have talked about us this past weekend, who have to go to and from our parking lots, which are also littered with these NIP bottles. There's been incidents that the officers have dealt with with juveniles in our local parks. Sometimes they come in for fights and we, we notice that some of the juveniles are intoxicated. The number one alcohol bottle that we find are NIP bottles on these, on these kids, these juveniles. They tell us that they get them from the people that are hanging around the liquor stores, who are also purchasing NIP bottles. The, the reason why they have these NIP bottles is because they're easily discreet, just as Michaela Linder described, they're easily discreet, easily disposed of, very hard for you to catch the person in the act of disposing these little NIP bottles. OUI arrests in North Adams have increased, not the actual OUI arrests have increased, but we've noticed that when we have an OUI, the number one thing found in their vehicle is, are the NIP bottles as well. It used to be a can of beer, a six-pack of beer that we would find in the car. Now it's primarily NIP bottles. Again, easily consumed, easily discarded out the window. That's probably why you see them on, on your yards or on roads, even further away from the downtown. It's very difficult for officers to monitor the NIP bottle consumption due to its small size. The best approach to combating the problem would be to ban NIP bottle sales rather than trying to increase accountability through law enforcement. Again, I explained to you, it's very hard for us to catch these people in the act of discarding them on the ground and then issue them a fine. And even if we do issue them a fine, they don't have any money to pay the fine, so there's no recourse for it. However, Massachusetts has shown success across our state with certain cities and towns that have banned NIP bottles in their jurisdiction. Some of these char, towns are Chelsea, Fairhaven, Falmouth, Newton, Mashpee, Martha's Vineyard, Worm, New Bedford, and then Tucket. Chelsea. Chelsea was the first municipality in Massachusetts to ban the NIPS in 2018. According to the Plymouth Independent Journal, Chelsea city officials noticed an immediate impact within a year of discarded litter, of decreased litter and a drop of protective custody from 222 to 86. Ambulance and fire responses were also down that year from 742 to 127. Newton banned single-used alcoholic beverage containers in less than or equal to 100 milliliters November 15th, 2021. Liquor establishments had six months to sell off their inventory, and it went into full effect June 30th, 2022. Falmouth enacted a ban of the sale of NIPS in October of 2021. Prior to the ban, Falmouth reported that NIP bottles made up a third of their littered items. Two years after the ban, Falmouth reported that NIP bottles were just 5% of the littered items. No liquor stores in Falmouth lost revenue, no jobs were lost, and no liquor stores were closed. What's happening in Pittsfield? In 2022, Ronaldo Delgado III petitioned the city of Pittsfield to ban the sale of NIP bottles in the city. Pittsfield was successful in banning styrofoam in 2015 and single-use plastic bags in 2019, after six years of debate. The NIP ban debate still continues in Pittsfield, however, at least they're talking about the issue. The North Adams Fire Department and workers from the hotel downstreet, just on the other side of this bridge, report picking up 20 to 30 NIP bottles a week in and around their buildings. And that's really, the fire department goes out, picks up NIP bottles, and discards them, 20 to 30 a week. The hotel down the street is the same thing, two separate locations, 20 to 30 each. These locations are high areas of tourism and local businesses. People come from out of town to stay at the hotel and have to walk over multiple NIP bottles just to enjoy the city downtown. Here's some pictures of Papaginos facing Hotel Downstreet. A close-up will show you that it's just littered with NIP bottles. That was there for quite a long time, and again, the fire department said that they went over and picked them up, and they just pile up again, over and over again. Now I want to take you on a small tour through North Adams. These are the cement blocks in front of the Brean Center, where we know that a lot of people congregate. If you look around these cement blocks, there's NIP bottles everywhere. That's another picture of the cement blocks. Nobody's picking them up, again, there's no recyclable value for these NIP bottles. It's not like you could bring them in for a cent or five cents, but you can notice that there's not many beer cans or any cans, because you can get money for bringing those back. However, these NIP bottles are just mowed over. Nobody picks them up, they mow them over and they just break down into smaller pieces of plastic. Taking a walk again on American Legion Drive, you can see the NIP bottles by the trees, on the sidewalks, mowed by the light posts, and by the building, the old movie theater. In the bushes, on the, on the wood chips, they're just easily purchased from the liquor stores. They walk out of liquor stores, drive down the street, and throw them right on the ground. Here's some homeless encampments that we have behind the Brean Center that we know about. Officers have to go there regularly for protective custody. When somebody's under the influence, they don't really go willingly. Sometimes we have to get into defensive tactics. So my officers are rolling on the ground with these people in this trash, mostly discarded NIP bottles. There's also syringes out there as well, but this is where people congregate, and they just throw them all on the ground. Behind the Brean Center as well, next to our tourism attract, attraction, which is the, the railroad, the rail trail. This is the fence that divides the Brean Center to the rail trail. It's just littered, again, with dozens and dozens of NIP bottles. This right here, this side, is just walking into Planet Fitness, getting out of the truck, walking into Planet Fitness, as soon as you look at the ground, this is what you see. Again, I'm not just picking on one local establishment, I'm just saying this is just one area that I just happened to take a picture. However, there are local parking lots away from that, over in the, the Graylock Valley neighborhood. I'm going to show you soon that these NIP bottles are just everywhere. Speaking of Graylock Valley neighborhood, this is the entryway to the Graylock Valley neighborhood, Graylock Ave. The chain link fence that lines the sidewalks, just littered with NIP bottles. I mean, the kids have to get, get on the bus, they have to walk right by this, and they're seeing it on the ground. This one, this, this image right here is, is really one that I really want to, to paint a picture of, obviously, to you, is my officers are out there doing a lot more proactive and persistent policing. We know it to, to work, because it's worked in New York City back in, in, in the 90s. This is what they did, they found areas of concern, they would clean it up in conjunction and with help with the Health Department, with our Building Department, with our City Yard. We go to these locations, we notice that there's graffiti everywhere, we notice that there's trash on the ground. Again, a bunch of NIP bottles just lining the grounds out there. And we clean it up and we block it off from, from future use of this, these locations. And the reason for doing this is that we're cleaning up the blight, we're cleaning up the, the problem, and then also interacting with people to guide them into social services. So not only are you doing persistent policing, but you're aiding them and guiding them to other social work and, and getting them to the services that they may need. So this is what it looked like to begin with, and this is what it looks like afterwards. So it can look like that, and that's just one snippet of one location in our city that is just littered with, with just refuge, constant refuge, that my officers have to go into and deal with people. I mean, this is one location, I, I implore you to take a walk and to look up, look under some of these bridges, and you'll notice, especially the Christopher Columbus Bridge, it's just littered with bottles, needles, cans, just things that will ultimately hurt you if you really have to go under there and, and, and interact with somebody. So my plea is that the officers and city workers are proactively searching these areas for ways to, to maintain them and preserve, preserve them for blight. We want this city to look more beautiful and appealing to the tourism, to the public, to get more people to come here to want to live here. They're not going to want to live here when they're seeing alleyways like this, or they're walking on NIP bottles as they're walking down American Legion Drive to get to the fire department, to get to Hotel Downstreet. One of my concerns, or one of the things that I've noticed, is that most of the people that we arrest within the city is people that are under the influence of alcohol. Again, this is just making it more easily accessible for people to consume alcohol, which is just going to raise our arrest rate, which I've shown to you. It went from 43 people last year to 83 people alone so far this year. A ban of the NIPS in the city would lower our amount of litter, litter, just like in Falmouth, who went from one-third of their litter to just 5%. A ban of NIPS in the city would help reduce the number of protective custody, as I have explained. And I just really want the city council just to take it under advisement, talk about it, think about if we can implement this ban, or at least expand this, expand this conversation to more than just NIPS. Maybe we can talk about single-use plastic bags or styrofoam. It really bothers me, we have three Cumberland Farms in our town that still service us with, with plastic bags and styrofoam. However, other local Cumberland Farms within relatively short distance do not do that. So I just want to start the conversation, also talk to the public to see their concerns as well, other businesses that actually sell NIP bottles, to see their concerns as well, to at least start the dialogue, to see if we can resolve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Counsel Shade?
Yes, to the Chair, to the Chief, thank you for coming in and presenting this information. I know that NIPS are a problem in the community. I'm someone who walks everywhere, I see them everywhere, so I'm very familiar with them. I don't know that a ban is the answer. My, my question when you ban things like this is, what else do people turn to? If people aren't doing NIPS, are they turning, are we going to find more needles now? Is it easier to get drugs than alcohol? Does that lead to an increase in drug use? Does that lead to an increase in needles on the street? It almost sounds like the better solution would be to implement a bottle tax on the NIPS, because then the homeless people will clean them all up, and we won't have to worry about them being on the streets. So I think there could be a bunch of different solutions to this problem. I don't know that the ban's the right one, but I do think it is time to have the conversation and see what we can do as a community to come up with a solution together. Thank you.
Yeah, I, okay.
No, go ahead, Chief.
I, I agree with that. I, I would love to have a tack, or you, you can bring that to like Big Y or something and get some money for the NIP bottles. You, you would have people picking them up all day long.
Yeah.
However, just waiting for Massachusetts to do that seems like it would be our detriment, because we have a problem now. So they dealt, they dealt with this in 2018 by banning it in, in other areas, and they're still waiting for the same thing we are waiting on. for the same thing we are waiting on. So in my mind, again, I feel like we can have a ban, see if it works, try something, anything, and if something better comes along the way, we can lift the ban, or we can release the ban.
Counsel Blackmore, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we refer this to public safety with a return date of 11/12/25, and have the Public Safety Committee, this is the aside, it doesn't have to be, do some research and come up with some ordinance language, and then send it to general government after that, after it comes to us, to tweak the language. Yeah, I agree, it'd be good to see a five-cent deposit on them, but I know that that's a state thing, and I'd rather act now. Somebody else had approached me about this a while ago, and I thought they were going to present language, like, a year and a half ago, and I was just talking to them the other day, and so I'm glad that this is moving forward. And I think the single, I think the styrofoam and single-use plastic bags are the next step, but I think this is easily doable, and I think we need, we may need a longer-than-six-month lead time for businesses, but if, I'm sure, now that I'm here saying this, I'm sure I'll get a few phone calls or emails saying, "What are you doing?" But, and I think part of it isn't, it's the fact that, like the chief said, they're easy. You can fit them in your pants pocket, you can go into the movies with them, you can walk down the street and people don't know you have them, you can consume surreptitiously, and I think that's why we have a problem partially with the litter of it, and then also why it's an issue in some of the, and I didn't realize we had all these tent encampments either, so I think it's worth looking into, and I do think that it publicates, you should start the conversation.
Second motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Bona.
Yeah. I agree with Counsel Shade. I'm not sure if the ban is the right thing. I mean, we got to have discussion. There's sort of three issues here that I see. We have the litter, we have a health issue of alcohol, alcoholism, and we have environment where just plastic is just being disposed. So there's sort of three things going on. When it comes to the litter, I did hear you say, "Well, we could fine them," but I guess I'm just curious, on an average year, how many fines does the police department give out for littering?
I, probably none.
Probably none. And so when I looked at those pictures, I saw a lot of nips, but I also saw a lot of just general trash. So you go over Mass Ave, you see trash. I walk around, on average, when I do a loop downtown, I pick up one to two bags of trash, and the nips, there's nips, but that's not what's filling the bulk of the trash. It's plastic cups, plastic bottles, paper, a lot of fast food paper and bags. I would say the fast food and soda cups from, you know, your gas stations and stuff like that is the bulk of what fills the trash bags. However, you could say those aren't as much of a health risk. I pick up nips around my store, but I pick up a lot more cigarette butts. And we're not banning cigarettes because, you know, but yet those filters are plastic that are on the ground. They are not disposable, they don't decay, and every day I pick up hundreds of cigarette butts just in front of my store versus maybe one or two nips. One option, and I do believe I can see some of the owners in here in the audience of maybe who own these stores that are going to sell the nips, because you can still get nips in Adams, you'll still be able to get nips in Williamstown. People could buy the nips and bring them in, you know, if they want to. We know there's needles on the street, and the stores aren't selling the needles, so illegal product can still make its way here. But maybe the stores themselves can implement a refund. So if they, you know, if I hear them come forward and say, "Look, yes, we'll work on this, we'll pay people a refund if they bring the bottles in," or store credit or something, I don't know. That is a possible option, where it doesn't have to be the state. At one point, I was thinking, like, geez, $1,000 could get 10,000 nip bottles off the street. So that's something that maybe the businesses that are selling these could implement their own refund, and while maybe not the customers are doing it, but yeah, other people pick it up. Every night, you can see downtown, there are people, one thing you don't see a lot of is soda bottles, and why don't you see soda bottles? Because they have a refund. So if there's a value to this trash, it gets picked up. You know, if we move on, you know, you did mention about we could go from this to plastic bags and stuff like that, and we did have a plastic bag discussion, it was where you were really getting deep into debate right before COVID, and then all of a sudden, everything became plastic. Like, literally, we were throwing plastic away 10 times more a day with COVID than we were before COVID, and that whole discussion with the state disappeared. But I'll tell you this, I will have a hard time ever supporting a plastic bag ban until the city gets rid of plastic silverware in the schools, because every day we're throwing away thousands of plastic forks, spoons, and dishes, and stuff like that. And I feel like if the city's going to implement these things, the city has to be the role model and say, "We're going to do it first with ourselves." But, that being said, I'm happy to see it go to Public Safety, General Government for discussion. I sort of put the hint out there to the businesses, if they feel like they have a creative idea of how they want to help with this, because I don't feel a ban is going to eliminate the product. It could, if we're, you know, because then what size? Because I believe there's a mini bottle that's a little bigger than a nip, you know? So are we going to say specifically what size? Because all of a sudden now, instead of nips, that I don't know how many milliliters of lips are, but the next size isn't much bigger, and we could just be telling people, "Hey, for a dollar more, you can buy twice as much alcohol," and we're going to see bigger bottles out there. So these are things we do have to take into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fitch?
Yeah, thank you. I'm actually sort of echoing what some of the other counselors said. They have similar thoughts to mine as well. I am also deeply uncomfortable with the concept of a ban, the concept of government banning a certain-sized bottle, you know, to repair a problem that our society has. I do also think there are other solutions. I have also seen all kinds of other garbage out there, including fast food, you know, containers. That's like the most of what I see as well. I've also seen, you know, and we're not talking about banning McDonald's or Dunkin' Donuts, which is understandable.
Give me time.
Yeah. But anyway, I'm curious about us exploring more trash receptacles around town, you know, trash and recycling receptacles, especially in some of these problem areas as a potential addition to the solution. Regardless, however, and also boosting support for substance abuse coaching, counseling. I'm glad that this is moving forward, though. I think this is a conversation worth having, but I am also very curious about finding other options as opposed to specifically a ban on a bottle size.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Thank you, Chief.
All right, thank you.
And we have a motion to send this to Public Safety with a return date of November 12th, 2025. And we had a second?
Yeah.
All those, yep, we had a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Communication, our council paper number 12,00526, communication number 130 from Mayor Maxey, announcing the appointments of Dean Bullett to the Airport Commission, Shannon Cahill to the Conservation Commission, and the reappointment of Deborah Forgie.
Forgie, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Forgie to the Cemetery Commission. Mayor, would you like to speak on those appointments, please?
I'm pleased to announce that I've appointed the following people to boards and commissions. Dean Bullett, who is a new appointment, but yet a reappointment to the Airport Commission for a term expiring September 22nd, 2028. Mr. Bullett is with us today. Thank you so much for joining us, Dean. The reappointment of Deb Forgie to the Cemetery Commission until 20, I'm sorry, until October 3rd, 2028, and the appointment of Shannon Cahill to the Conservation Commission to August 1st, 2028. I thank each of these individuals for their service and their dedication to helping us move North Adams forward. Also, in your communication is a list of open vacancies on boards and commissions, which also can be found on our Boards and Commissions website. If you just click on whatever you're interested in, you'll see where we have openings. So I continue to encourage the council to, if you have any friends or colleagues that are interested in serving, to have them reach out to me, or anyone in the community who's interested, you could either fill out the form online or send me an email. So that is our quick update on boards and commissions for this evening.
Thank you. Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor, I believe the Animal Control Commission is missing?
Yes, we're working on getting people to join those boards.
Just so the public is aware, the Animal Control Commission also exists, and they're looking for members, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, moving on. Communication number one, our council paper number 12,00527, communication number 131 from Mayor Jennifer Maxey, requesting time to present a proclamation recognizing and supporting General Aviation Appreciation Month. Again, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, President Sapienza. It was brought to my attention that September is General Aviation Appreciation Month, and for all the topics that we have around the airport, I think it's important that we thank the people who work over there, and we thank the positive support that we have at the Herrmann and West Airport. So for September 20 and 25, 2025, whereas the Herrmann West Airport has long served as a vital gateway to the city of North Adams, supporting aviation, commerce, tourism, and community events, and whereas the airport continues to play an important role in connecting North Adams to the greater region, fostering economic growth, and providing opportunities for education and recreation, and whereas the 2019 Massachusetts statewide airport economic impact study update found that general aviation airports in the state support an annual economic impact of $630 million, more than 5,100 jobs, and a payroll close to $270 million, and whereas the city of North Adams recognizes the importance of preserving and maintaining the critical public asset to ensure its safe and effective operations for residents, businesses, and visitors alike, and whereas the success of the Herrmann West Airport is achieved not only through city planning and investment, but also through the dedication of the airport users who invest their time and energy in their commitment to flying, and whereas the city extends its gratitude and recognition specifically to Lonny Simonetti for his outstanding commitment to the upkeep and maintenance of the airport grounds and facilities, ensuring the airport remains welcoming, safe, and operational all year round. I now therefore, Jennifer A. Maxey, Mayor of the city of North Adams, do hereby proclaim September 2025 in recognition and celebrate the importance of the airport, as well as honor the contributions of those who support its success, especially Lonny Simonetti. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Council paper number 12,00528, communication number 132 from Mayor Maxey, recommending the confirmation of the list of election workers for a term to begin on September 24th, 2025, and expiring on August 31st, 2026. I will turn it over to the mayor.
So this communication basically speaks for itself. This list is created by the city clerk, Tina Leonejo, reviewed by myself and Tina. This basically just appoints these election workers for the term stated in the communication. As we know, it is an election season is ahead, and this is the first step we have in building the operation schedule, correct, Tina? So this is a very important document, so Tina can go forward with her planning. So with that, I respectfully request your approval of the election worker list presented.
Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Wilkinson.
To the mayor, through the chair, please. Are these paid positions?
Yes.
And how much do they receive?
Are they? They are the 15 minimum wage. So the 1684.
Thank you.
Yep, and they work very hard.
I'm sure they do. I know most of them.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committee reports in minutes. Hearing none. We have no licenses tonight. Now move on to open forum. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. As a reminder, I will tap the gallows when you have reached the two-minute limit to signal that your time has ended, and as a courtesy, I also ask that all parties please refrain from any personal attacks. And we have Ms. Barbeau, oh no, I'm sorry, Mr. Malazo?
Okay, I wasn't going to speak tonight. This is directed at Counsel Fitch, as well as-
Jennifer Maxey. I can't help-
Point of order? Name and address for the record.
I would like my time back.
You will get your time. I'll reset the clock.
My name is Mike Malazo. I live in 91 Wheeler Ave, Clarksburg, Mass.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So this is directed at Counsel Fitch, as well as Jennifer Maxey. I can't help the call you out, that you just started this new board, the Affordable Housing Trust, which I think is great, but you're asking the mayor to appoint, and this board to then approve the nominees for that board, which your own council has said that doesn't have to happen. They can't even spend taxpayer dollars, yet you're asking that you want to be able to approve those members. Airport Commission, you're helping her break that all currently, because you're sitting on the Airport Commission without your own approval, without this body's approval. You just appointed Dean Bullett, which I welcomed Dean onto the Airport Commission, but it's not a legal appointment. By state law, you're breaking state law, and you just appointed this new board, or put together this new commission, and are asking to be able to oversee those appointments. It's kind of hypocritical that you would do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for open forum? The individual in the back?
Ray Adams.
Yes, that would be you, yes. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Nikhil Poyalavam, I live in Versailles, North Adams. At the beginning of the meeting, it was shared that the solicitor's opinion is that members on all boards and commissions do not have to be residents of North Adams. However, the qualifications on your web state state differently. I can read it to you. In order to serve on a city board or commission, you must be a resident of the city of North Adams. It's my understanding that the school building committee has eight members who do not live in North Adams. Could someone please explain why none of you are following a rule that is stated on your website? If you're not following the very rules that are stated, why should anyone follow rules? In fact, there's a rule in town that people need to pay their taxes. In fact, there's a pay-your-bill link on your website. So can I just ignore it? Because it seems you are okay with ignoring the rules and laws of the city.
Thank you.
You can ignore it, we'll just take it.
Ms. McDonald?
Hi, Alexa McDonald, 200 East Main Street. Excuse me. In discussion of the nip ban, I just want to state that I work at the Breen Center, and if you go around the back, you will see a, you will see a basketball hoop, because children are engaging out there, whether it's with their therapist or with another person at the Breen Center. Just this afternoon, as I was out there with kids, someone walked by and said to be careful because people were drinking in the woods out there. I'm not saying this to be in favor of the ban, but just to be aware of the root causes of why people are drinking so much, and why people are living behind the Breen Center, because there are children and teenagers who we want to be able to participate and be outside and engage. And it is a very heavily trafficked area for a lot of the unhoused population, and they have been very kind to us, but we should be looking at the root cause of why they are engaging with nips. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record.
I'm Caleb. I moved here about a year ago. First time here, so wonderful seeing everybody.
Please state your address, please, for the record.
And your full name? 82 to 84 Beaver Street.
And your full name.
Caleb Worston.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you to the police chief for bringing up the nip ban. Wonderful idea. I'm trying to convince my girlfriend to move up here from New York, and, you know, walking around with her doesn't always feel safe, and I think something like this would make North Adams feel safer.
Speak into the mic. Thank you.
Yeah, the nip ban would make North Adams feel safer, it would cut plastic, and, you know, plastic takes over 500 years to decompose, so, you know, I'm hugely in favor of the nip ban. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Barbeau? Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Jen Barbo, Church Street, from here in North Adams. I have a second communication I'd just like to share with you quickly this evening, also from Council President Sapienza, in regard to a public record request. And this speaks to the executive meeting that you have coming up next. Meeting minutes were requested. I was given a copy of the response. And as someone who sat on that side of the city council and in fact was directly threatened by a member of this audience, I have never heard that happen again. I have never seen anyone in this room addressing this body as adversarial. Are we passionate? Yes. We come here and speak to you because we have elected you to be our voice. That is the reason you are sitting on that side of the table. When we don't feel our voices are being heard, we do come here to express that with you. But it is very troubling when we have been told that protecting security measures pertaining to city council chambers, the release of minutes could not result, would result in the disclosure of plans that could reveal vulnerabilities, tactics, and response protocols that adversaries could exploit. Do you see us as adversaries? We're not adversaries. We're constituents of this community, and our democracy is based on our right to come in here and speak. Adversarial is the behavior that follows after we speak towards the members of the community. And that has created the adversary in this, the adversarial tone in this, in this city. We are not your adversaries. We are your constituents who have elected you to hear what it is that we're asking you to do. And I find it very upsetting, Counselor Sapienza, that that is how this city council, or you have represented, that this city council views the members of this community. And I hope you discuss that tonight when you go into executive, into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Okay, at this time, we are going to move on. Mayor's updates.
Thank you, President Sapienza. As most of you probably have read on our Facebook page, due to ongoing drought conditions, the North Adams Water Department has been closely monitoring our water levels at the Mount Williams and Notch Reservoirs. While both reservoirs are currently below their typical levels, we are not at critical status. We will continue to track conditions carefully and provide updates as needed. We encourage everyone to do their part to conserve water and protect this vital resource. Tim LaScarbo will be present at the next meeting to follow up with a communication from Counselor Fitch about the water presentation. And at that time, I would expect him to do a more deeper dive into our drought situation. But that's where we stand as of tonight. We've got lots of fun things coming up. We have a very busy month coming up. Our first annual Soapbox Derby and Barbecue Cook-Off will be on September 28th from 1:00 to 5:00 on Main Street and Holden Street. We also will be hosting the Milltown Circus at Knoll Field, running October 3rd through the 5th and 10th through the 13th. We will also be hosting the North Adams Dog Parade on October 2nd at 6:00 PM at City Hall. In addition, Fall Fun continues with our Children's Parade and Fair on October 4th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then, of course, our wonderful Fall Full Age Parade in our downtown, October 5th from 1:00 to 3:00. As we close out the season, MBCC will have their Trick or Treat in our downtown on October 24th from 4:30 to 6:00 PM, followed by the Haunted House at the Mohawk Theater from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. In addition, it is Fire Awareness Week, and the Firehouse will have an open house on Saturday, October 11th, which they will have a whole list of activities for kids and adults, but also be teaching some fire prevention skills to the community. The city of North Adams is also kicking off our initiative called Restock the Shelves Food Drive, which will run from September 29th to October 15th. You can drop off canned goods or perishables at City Hall, the police fire station, the library, and the Spitzer Center, and we will be making a donation to the food pantry. In addition, the Community Coalition will be hosting their annual update forum on Friday, October 10th, from 10:00 to 12:00 at Hotel Downstreet. I hope to see some of the counselors there as well as some community members, as we will be giving big updates on a lot of our projects. So thank you for your time tonight, and have a good evening.
And we have a question from Counselor Shade.
Yes, through the chair to the mayor. With this being Fire Awareness Week and us being in drought conditions, is there any fire burning ban in effect?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not that I am aware of at this moment in time.
What common sense says.
Common sense says try not to burn during a drought. There's not much water.
We did have a discussion around that today, so we're hoping that it rains tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Me too.
Okay, moving on. We have counselor updates, liaison updates, counselor updates. Counselor Shade.
Yes, thank you. I don't usually like to talk about national scale things in city council meetings. Most people will say it's not the place for it, but if this isn't the place for it, where is the place for it? We've currently seen an uptick in violence around our country. The political environment is becoming more and more hostile. We are seeing different communities being blamed for different things. And we're living in a time where, where many people are afraid. I can tell you that many people like me are afraid right now when we have government officials calling for us to be institutionalized and calling us terrorists because we exist in this community. So it makes for a very scary time and a very scary environment for many people. Many people don't feel safe. I just want to remind you all that we are members of the community. We are not terrorists. We are not criminals. We are your colleagues, your neighbors, your friends, your family. We are just human beings trying to live our lives like anyone else. So please don't judge people for thinking one way or living their lives in any way. Judge people by their own actions and their own merits. And try to stop passing blame and creating such a toxic environment in our community. It seems to be becoming more and more acceptable that political violence is happening, that it's okay to yell and berate and scream at people, talk down to people. And we shouldn't accept that anywhere, and I hope we don't accept that in North Adams. And I hope here in our community, we call it out when it happens, and we try to help each other, because that's what good neighbors and good communities do. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fitch?
Okay, sure. Yeah, just one note about the Fall Full Age Day Parade, October 5th, Sunday. I'm excited about it. As somebody who has participated in it, in the parade several different times with counselors and also with working on a float through North Adams Pride before, I just wanted to plant a seed in everybody's head, you know, just maybe consider next year, do you want to join the parade? Do you want to create a float for the parade? I think the more quirky, fun things, the better, even if it's just a group of people walking together, as opposed to building a whole float, which is a lot of work, let me tell you. Just something to think about for next year. I'd just love to see all of you in that. It is so much fun again. Also, thank you, Counselor Shade, for bringing up what you did tonight. Thank you so much for that. I think that is important, and I completely agree with Counselor Shade. I also want to thank Mayor Maxey for creating the first of hopefully monthly department reports. I love that structure. I think that's really healthy for our community to hear that, and I personally love hearing about our departments as well. And then I also want to address a couple of audience concerns. For one thing, my perspective, and I probably speak for every single counselor when I say this, I think, we need you folks in the audience, we want you folks in the audience. It stinks when there's not great public participation here. We, we need this group here. We want more of this group here. And I've never heard anybody call anybody in the audience an adversary or adversarial. I don't think that that is a feeling that any of us has, and it is certainly not something that I have. There are security matters that we talk about, and it is important that those discussions are indeed private, but it is not about the general populace or people in this room. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fitch. Counselor Blackmore?
Yeah, I guess I'd want to address the email with the other, another ruling from Attorney Bard. It went from President Sapienza to Clerk Leonezio at 8:55 this morning. Please include in our package. And it's included, but it was stapled to the back. The other agenda items I'd already seen. There's no reason that couldn't have been emailed to us at that point. And I checked my email several times for updates throughout the day. I would have preferred to have not seen this kind of at the end of the meeting. And also, like, the other stuff we got was all in piles separate. Again, when there's a separate communication, it's not actually attached that we haven't seen already. It's helpful if it's actually separate. And not everybody shows up 20 minutes early to go through the whole package again and read it. A lot of us go through the package on a weekend or another day. So please, in the future, I don't agree with his opinion, but that's beside the point.
So noted. Thank you. Counselor Bell?
Yeah. I was asked to announce and remind the community that the Pops Cares Dinner is coming up, October 4th. It's their dinner in auction. They give out 125,000 a year to local caretakers and citizens with cancer. And this is one of their big fundraising events. Their tickets can easily be found online or just ask people in the community. I'm sure someone can connect you to where you can get them. But it's a popular event and one of their bigger fundraisers.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I have one final thing here, addressing the concerns of Ms. Barbo. I don't consider anybody in this room an adversary. I like to see a full council chambers. It shows me that we have people in the public, our citizens, that care about being here. And I always welcome people to visit. Unfortunately, there are players that could be adversarial. The idea of the security measures are to try to protect as many people as possible, including members of the government and the citizens of the city. Those of you that are here, again, you're all welcome. There's no adversarial concerns with any of you in the, in this room tonight, or has there been in recent past? Thank you. Okay. At this time, we will enter into executive session. We will vote into, enter into an executive session to discuss the approval and review of confidentiality, confidentiality of the status of disclosure for the security meeting held on February 25th, 2025. Council will be adjourning from the executive session due to having completed all council business. Do we have a motion to enter into executive?
We have to enter into executive session.
Second. Second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes. Hold on a second. Blackmore? Phone on.
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?[1792.41]